And we will start now the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, May 17th at 6:33 PM. And I'd like to have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chu?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hillmer?
Here.
And Mayor Haroff?
Here.
And with that, for those who are able to stand, please join us for the pleasure of the evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we'll work through the agenda for tonight. We had presentations and proclamations as Agenda Item Number Two. We have none, although we are working on those. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Public Comment. Please approach the podium and state your name and where you live. Individuals have three minutes to speak. Five minutes if representing a group. This is good. This is a change. The council is not permitted to take action and is strictly limited to discuss any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arising after the posting of the agenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Hearing none. We'll move to Item Number Four, which is Approval of the Consent Calendar. And I think we need to take one item off, which I had a moment ago.
Is that 4.6, the permit authority?
I'm sorry. Shannon, what's the item that we have to take off the calendar tonight?
Yeah, so it's Item 4.6.
Item 4.6.
Right.
So we'll take that off the calendar?
Yeah, so we need a motion to remove it from the consent calendar.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to remove 4.6 from the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll take that item off the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So I'll move.
Second?
Second. Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent calendar is approved. So let's hear a report about Item 4.6.
I believe 4.6 has been removed from the consent calendar. It was already acted on at the last meeting, so it doesn't require any action.
So there's nothing we need to do tonight?
It was just added on, Ron.
No, I think, I believe it was just inadvertent inclusion a second time, but this was actually on your consent calendar at your previous meeting.
Right. So that's, that's fine. So we're finished with that. And we can then move to Item Number 4. Actually, not 4.7, so that's all approved. Item Number Five, City Manager's Oral Report.
Yes. So I do have a short, surprisingly public works skewed city manager's report this week. So firstly, as a follow-up to Mr. Schwartz's report at the last meeting, we have managed to increase our public works crews through some cost savings from some staff shortages we've had over the winter. And so we do have some more folks out there helping to address the weeds that seem to be popping up all over the city. They were on North Magnolia today, clearing some of those weeds. And then in about a week, they will have caught up and they'll be back to starting on the ones that they first started on in spring for round two. So we also have a new hire in public works maintenance this week and another one scheduled for, to start next week, so that should bring our crew up to full strength in public works. Another thing Public Works has been working on in partnership with Ms. Rebecca Newburn's sixth grade class at Hall Middle School. Her class was studying climate change, and they were interested in planting some trees. And the Larkspur Community Foundation had been collecting donations specifically for tree planting in Piper Park. So together with our public works crews, next Thursday, we're going to have a tree planting with Ms. Newburn's class, utilizing the funds the Larkspur Community Foundation collected for those trees. That's scheduled for next Thursday. There'll be notice on our website confirming that. That's Thursday, the 25th at 8:15 in the morning, I think it's, tentatively.
Where is it?
It's at Piper Park. There's three locations where they're going to be planting trees. One is next to the tennis courts, and then the other two are along the path that follows behind the tennis courts. Some other public works news, PG&E crews, you may have seen them around town. They're working off of Magnolia on Piedmont. They'll be working on West Baltimore, and then when they're finished there, they'll be moving on to Magnolia. They obviously came in for an encroachment permit with the city, so they do have some strict traffic control that they have to observe so that they don't impede school and commute traffic. And so we have an inspector who's monitoring their work in that location. And then just this week, they started work up on Madrone Canyon. So they have a gas line replacement up there. They came in and they worked with us on the traffic control. They've worked with the fire department to make sure that we have emergency access. As you know, there's some very narrow streets up there, and they're going to be working on those narrow streets. So we've been coordinating with fire to make sure that we can accommodate emergency access while they're working on that narrow street. And another notice here is that this week is the last chance for people to turn in their applications for both the library board and for the Commission on Aging. There's one vacancy for each of those boards. The applications will be accepted through this Friday, and all the details are on the city's website. Next week, there is a meeting of the 2050 Plan Steering Committee. That's Monday, May 22nd at 7:00, and that's here in the council chambers. And then we are continuing our Measure C pavement condition meetings, engagement meetings with neighborhoods. We've had two so far. We have another two upcoming on Monday. This one is the morning meeting, 9:30 in the morning at Central Marin Police. We'll be giving the presentation again. And then following that, I think it's Tuesday, the May 30th is the next one, and that's an evening meeting at 6:30, also at Central Marin.
Right.
And where were the other two before, the last two you just mentioned? Were they in neighborhoods?
No, they were. One was here and the other was at CNPA.
Okay, so no one's had it yet.
We haven't had any in the neighborhoods yet. We've done some specific targeting to certain neighborhoods for each of these meetings, but there, there's some general context in all of these meetings, some general information. And then we've targeted some neighborhoods specifically where we could talk about their, their issues, but the meetings have been here.
Great, thank you.
And the meeting on the 30th is going to focus on Greenbri Roads.
Correct, yes.
Okay, any, is that it?
That concludes the report, yes.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Just a comment. I attended the Measure C meeting at CNPA recently, I guess it was last week. And I just want to commend the Public Works Director on his presentation. I thought that it was very thorough, easy to understand, and I think it'll serve us well as we go through these series of meetings.
Yeah, and I join in that. I was, I was there for that, that meeting as well, and I thought it was terrific. It was not as well attended as maybe some of us might have liked, but it was, it was, was very good. Any other questions, council? All right. With that, we'll just move on to Item Number Six, Council Members' Reports and Comments. And we'll start with Councilmember Hillmer.
A brief report. It's hard for me not to mention this. I attended the SMART Board meeting this afternoon representing MCCMC on that board, reviewing the train schedules. And to my surprise, the train schedule, as it currently is described, has no trains arriving in San Rafael in the morning between 7:30 and 9:00. And it has no trains departing San Rafael northbound in the afternoons between 5:00 and Mayor Phillips and I both vigorously argued that this was going to encourage people who otherwise would take the train to drive, and it totally ignored possibly the greatest need for major employers in Central Marin, Civic Center and Bio Marin, from having many of their employees use the train, also resulting in people who might be arriving at the train platform in downtown San Rafael, forcing them to wait 90 minutes, where otherwise the trains are arriving every 30 minutes without a train during major commute time. So I'll be making that case that, that gap needs to follow the pattern of the rest of the schedule, 30-minute arrivals and departures, serving major employers in Central Marin. So I just wanted to make that report this afternoon. I was quite surprised, as was Mayor Phillips.
Just out of curiosity, what was the explanation that you got for why that arrangement was
The short version is they had, the, the single-track system requires the trains to be scheduled in four train sets, so that throughout the day, they had to put gaps in the schedule for technical engineering reasons. And rather than have those gaps occur in Sonoma, they chose to have those gaps occur in San Rafael during those periods. I, I'll get more information, Mr. Mayor. I don't know anything beyond that, but from a commuter's point of view, it's the worst possible schedule for San Rafael, in my opinion.
Sounds like that. Was there any update about the status of bringing the train into Larkspur Landing?
The extension should start construction in the 2017-18 cycle. It's delayed, given some of the complications that have taken place in San Rafael.
And will we have a quiet zone in Larkspur Landing, or not?
It's my intention to continue the quiet zone through Marin to the terminus near the ferry. And I think our council will support that.
I think, I think, I think they would. But I understand there's some federal restrictions about when the horn needs to be utilized.
Again, I'll, I'll get more information and bring it back to the council. It's our intention to continue the quiet zone.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay. Councilmember Morrison?
Nothing.
Councilmember Chu? Councilmember Way?
Well, let me do something.
Oh, please, please.
If you don't mind, I believe we have a scout amongst our audience, and he is going to work on a project to get his Eagle badge, and he wants to suggest how he'd like to go about it and deal with it in Larkspur. May he speak before I go to business 8.1?
Absolutely. Please, join us.
Cody, thanks for coming.
Hi, my name is Cole Doss here. I'm a Boy Scout 2.4, based out of Long Beach. And I'm interested in doing a service project in Larkspur to get my Eagle rank. Right now, I'm thinking there's, there's a sign on Magnolia that once stood, that was, it, it marks the beginning of the historic district. That's, has been removed and is on the ground. I'm interested in restoring it and reinstalling it. I know there might have been another sign on the other end of Magnolia, on the other end of town at once, at one time. I haven't been able to find that or where it once was. So I don't need any funding from Larkspur. I mostly just need permission to go ahead with the project. But if you have any suggestions for any other projects, I'm open to any comments.
Cody, do you want to go first?
Oh, I was going to say, Mr. Skinner here is head of our public works, and in combination with him and Dick Whitley, the head of Park and Rec.
Sure.
That's how they were able to do two other Eagle Scout projects.
Okay.
But the one you have sounds pretty good, too, and you can talk to him.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking, this is North Magnolia you're speaking about, right?
Yes, yeah.
That really needs help, so thank you for focusing on that, that area of Larkspur. Sounds good.
Good. Looking forward to what you come up with. And your, your parents have my email, so if you need to bounce around some ideas, let me know.
Great, thank you.
Take care, Cody.
Thank you very much for that. We appreciate your, your help and assistance in our community. Thanks so much. So, nothing from you?
No.
Nothing in particular from me, although I do want to make mention that during the month of June, I will be absent for both of the city council meetings. The first one because of business reasons, and the second one because of my family's trip to China.
Great.
Which is great. So Vice Mayor Hillmer will be taking the leading role during June, and I appreciate that.
Big shoes to fill, but I'll do my best.
Well, they're not that big. So I think that ends Agenda Item Number Six. Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Hearings, non-scheduled. So we'll go right to Eight, which is a workshop to review proposed capital improvement program, CIP budget for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Yes, thank you, Public Works Director Julian Skinner. So we have a presentation tonight. This is a workshop format for a first glance at the capital improvement program. There's no action requested of council tonight. They will consider this item along with the operating budget at a following meeting in June. So this is an opportunity to provide feedback to staff on the proposed projects inside the capital improvement program. There are a couple of handouts. There's a copy of the PowerPoint, and then there's also some project fact sheets that go into a little bit more detail on some of the projects. So just as an overview of where we are in this process, so we did a little preview of what the capital program was going to look like when we brought the public works operating budget back in April. And then on the following night, we went to the city's Parks and Recreation Commission and gave a preview of the parks and recreation projects that we proposed in the capital program. And then on May 9th, we went before the city's planning commission to get a determination on the proposed CIP's consistency or conformity with the general plan. And then tonight, we're before you and the public with the first opportunity to go through the proposed projects for this year's plan. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be back in June for adoption, along with the operating budget. And so just to look at what we manage with our capital improvement program, so this is where we look after deferred maintenance, including all of our pavement. So again, 32 miles of pavement. Everything pretty much is associated with the pavement, so that's the striping, that's the traffic signals, the signs, streetlights. All of these things need to be maintained and get worked into our capital program. In addition to that, of the utilities that are under the ground, we're responsible for streetlights, the conduits, and for the storm drains. And the photo that's in this slide is one of our old storm drains that was pulled out of the ground, or half of the storm drain. The other half of it deteriorated over time. So a lot of our storm drains that are under our streets, we don't see. We can't see the condition they're in, like we can see the potholes in the street, and we know they need, the street needs fixing. We can't necessarily see what's going on with the storm drains underground unless we do some video analysis of them. And so we'll be ramping up and doing that as part of our storm drain master plan to get a better handle on the condition of the storm drains. In addition to that, we have one regional park, that's Piper Park, that we do the capital improvements for. And then the 10 mini parks, including the Hillview Greenway, and then there are nine buildings that the city maintains. So the most visible of our infrastructure is the streets. And so this is a rating of the streets. This is a Metropolitan Transportation Commission adopted method of rating streets on a scale of 0 to 100, with 100 being a perfect street and 0 being a failed street.
Julian, before you go on, I think Councilmember Way has a question.
Do you mind just kind of asking questions along the way in the workshop sort of format? Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Just back to a simple question about the storm drains.
Yes.
In our pavement rehabilitation project and other things, are we adding storm drains to streets that don't have them currently during the time of repaving? Or is that?
We, we are not specifically, and so we have a storm drain master plan that's woefully out of date at the moment. And one of the reasons we want to update the storm drain master plan is to identify opportunities where we should be making repairs or extensions to our storm drain system. And ideally, you would do those either just before a paving project or in conjunction with a paving project. And so that's why we're trying to move the storm drain master plan along as we look at, you know, paving a number of streets in the near future. We want to make sure that we're not ignoring the storm drains and have an issue in a few years where we have to dig something up that we've just paved.
Okay, thanks. Because I know there's tremendous mass streets without existing storm drain systems in them, because they're just so old. Yeah. All right, thanks.
So this was the table that shows the pavement condition going from excellent down to failed. Every two years, the city streets get rated. Somebody physically goes out, walks the streets, looks at cracks in the condition of the street, and comes up with a rating. In addition, when we pave a street, it goes into a computer program that then adjusts our rating of our streets overall. And so the, the last rating of our street showed that we were at a 39, or actually, that's a 39 or 42. There's a, there's a couple of different ways that they report the number, but either way, it's down in the poor category, which is not great. And I'll get into that a little bit later on about it's not just a number, it's not just that it's 39 or 42 out of 100, which is not a good score. There's actually a story behind that. And again, this one's hard to read, but these are all of the other agencies in Marin County showing their PCIs. We're at the very bottom. There's a number of reasons for that. It doesn't mean we were doing everything wrong throughout all the years, but we have an opportunity to fix that moving forward, and that's what we're going to focus on. And so as far as looking at the CIP overall, we obviously have our paving needs, but there's other needs, too. And so how are these identified? So we have condition studies. I just mentioned we get our streets rated. We also get our bridges rated so that we know when it's time to rehabilitate them. In the past, we've had studies done on our parks. We had the mini park master plan done. We've got a Piper Park master plan. And we've had evaluations of our buildings. So we have a plan for when these things need to be addressed and, and maintenance performed. And so we look at those studies every year when we develop the CIP, as well as do another check on those facilities to, to see if there's anything that needs to be fixed. The things that are in red here are studies that we haven't completed yet, that are known facilities that we have that have deficiencies. And so we need to move forward with our storm drain master plan so we can gather some information, so we can get some more storm drain projects into our capital program. And then retaining walls. We have some obvious retaining walls, such as the one over on Ward, that you can see it's failing, but there are many others throughout town that it would serve to have an evaluation of, to at least look forward and see what some budget needs are going to be for maintaining and possibly replacing retaining walls. We also have planning documents. This last year, you adopted our bike and pedestrian master plan that has a number of proposed projects in there that we evaluate every year when we look at the CIP. And then, as I mentioned, we've got some master plans for the parks. And then obviously, as we generate this year's capital program, we look at last year's program and all the, all the projects that were evaluated last year, too. And then there are often, there are grants that are out there, transportation for, Transportation Fund for Clean Air, that's what the TFCA is. So there's currently a call for projects for TFCA grants, and so we'll be looking through all of those documents. We have to try and find a good project that will match with that grant. And then there are several other grant applications throughout the year. So that's how we identify projects and the needs. The other, the flip side of that is where do you find the funds? And you've got all these needs, where does the money come from? Well, a good one is grants, because it's not our money, it comes from another source. Unfortunately, they're very competitive, depending on which grant it is. Typically, some of the more local grants, we have a little bit more of a chance with. But some of the federal grants and the statewide grants were competing with the rest of California, and a lot of other agencies have shovel-ready projects, and we typically don't fare as well with some of the bigger grants. Traditional funding sources, gas tax has been around for a while. It's been steadily declining, as has been very well documented over the years. There was recent legislation that looks to increase that in the future, so that will be helpful. And then other local money, obviously, we have the local sales tax, the Measure C that was passed, the five-year tax that's helping out with our paving program. And then the Transportation Authority of Marin has a couple of fund sources that come our way. We get a portion of transportation sales tax, Measure A, that comes to us for our local streets. And then they also have a vehicle registration fee that we get every three years that's their Measure B that gets passed on. And then another Measure A, not to be confused with the TAM Measure A, is there's a county Measure A for parks improvements also, that we get a portion of. And both of those are sales tax measures. The transportation sales tax is a half cent, and the county parks is a quarter cent. And then we have some local fees when we have developments and when we have permits. We have fees for the impacts they have on our streets and our parks. And so those go into our funds, and those build up, and we can use those for, for projects also. Just some examples of some grant funding that we've received. Transportation Development Act, TDA, that will be paying for the crosswalk improvements at Magnolia and Madrone. A California recycle grant paid for some playground fall material improvements at Heatherwood. Safe Pathways to School, which was a TAM, Transportation Authority Marin grant, will be paying for improvements on Doherty, multi-use path there. And then obviously, our big one is the Highway Bridge Program that paid for two bridges previously, and will be paying for the Bonner Bridge project. But one thing to notice in these, none of these grants pay for pavement rehabilitation.
Hey, Julian?
Yeah, go ahead.
Who writes the grants?
For the city, who does the application? It depends. It's either done by staff or we hire a consultant, depending on the complexity of the grant.
Okay, thanks.
So just highlighting one of those local funds that we talked about, Measure C, so that's a five-year half-cent sales tax that generates roughly about $1 million a year for our paving program. We add that to those other funds that I mentioned, the gas tax and the impact fees. But these funds are actually, they're not enough, that PCI number I showed you earlier on, the 39, with where the Measure C is and the current other funding we have. This funding has helped. We've done two years' worth of projects. We just, on your consent calendar tonight, you approved the third project, which will be streets in Palm Hill and Heather Gardens this summer, and a section of Madrone. That's the third year of our Measure C program, and then there's two following years, next year and the year after. But those projects, even though it's $1 million and a half dollars a year, they're only projected to keep us around that 39-40 PCI rating after we're completed with all of those. Because we're so low, our rating is so low, and our streets are in such a condition, it really would take accelerating our paving program and doing more streets quicker to really make a jump.
Seeing that, seeing that pothole, though, on the screen reminds me, I got a very nice compliment from some folks living up on Bret Hart about filling a very large pothole on Passay Way. So everyone's very happy up there right now, so.
Yeah, so we've had a very busy winter. As, as much as the truck traffic and that kind of volume is damaging to our streets, water is just as damaging. And water, when it comes from below the ground or above the ground, carries parts of the road away, and it has made for a lot of repeat pothole fills this winter. So that's, that's another reason to try and improve our streets and get that PCI rating up and get the streets in a better condition, so we're not doing repeated pothole repairs. What this slide shows here is kind of a, an evaluation that was done by the consultant that rated our pavement. Kind of looks at a five-year forecast of, we know we're at a 39 or 42 right now with our PCI. What's that number going to look like in the future? So I mentioned that it doesn't look like it's going to shift too much if we keep going at the current funding level we have. And that's, this grant shows, this, sorry, this graph shows that, and it shows a couple of other scenarios, too. Worst-case scenario, if we decided to stop funding paving today, the program predicts that our PCI rating would drop by nine points, so we drop down to about a 33. And then the 1.5 million, the current level, shows we would dip slightly. We would need to be at about 1.8 million per year to maintain overall our network of streets at the same condition they're in now. And then you start looking at incrementally adding funds, and what would it take to get to a certain level? And the next slide will kind of go on to why these levels are important. One of the first metrics they do is what would it take to just bump you up five points? Well, we'd have to spend $2.5 million a year to get up five points higher in five years. So it puts us mid-40s. We're still in the, in the poorer condition. The next two do a little bit more for you. If you spent $4 million a year, you would get up to a PCI of 60. Or ideally, if you could spend $5 million a year for the next five years, at the end of those five years, your PCI would be 70. And so if we look back- And so if we look back where the chart was with the rest of Marin County, that's a little bit better than average for where Marin County is. And what that does for you, not just keeps your, gets your streets in a better condition, there's less potholes out there for the public and for emergency crews to have to negotiate, but it actually makes it less expensive in the long run to take care of your streets. So if we looked at that $1.8 million over the next five years that would keep us at the 42, if we could get up to a PCI of 60, it actually only takes $900,000 to then maintain the streets from then on at that PCI level of 60. Because your streets are in such a better condition, you're able to do less expensive treatments on them. You don't have to do the full digouts and replace anymore. You're doing surface layers. And then if you could get up to a PCI 70, which is up in the fair-to-good category, you have much better streets, and then you're still less than $1 million a year to maintain your streets. So it actually costs less to keep your streets in better condition. To a certain point, once you start getting up to 85, and if you want perfect streets, then obviously, you're going to be doing a lot more repaving. But around 70 is kind of the target area for where you have streets that are in good condition and you're optimizing your ongoing maintenance costs.
Yes, please.
A question. The proposed enhancement of the current Measure C sales tax is three-quarters, up a quarter cent. If that were, just hypothetically, if that were to be successful and pass, and we were able to leverage those revenues, is the five years at $4 million a year or $20 million? Is that sort of a funding scenario possible, given what we're proposing?
Yeah, there are other agencies that have leveraged funds to accelerate their paving program and do exactly that. Been down in the low 40s or 50s and spent some money and accelerated their program, basically paved more streets sooner, and got their PCI up to a level where it's actually then, in the long run, less expensive for them to maintain. So, yeah, either one of those scenarios, you know, looking at the number of lane miles that we have in the city and how many we would have to do over the next four or five years, we think it would be very doable.
What would be the term of the sales tax increase necessary to implement that strategy? Just an estimate range would be okay?
So assuming that Measure C brings in $1 million a year now, if it were to go to three-quarters rather than a half, then that would be about $1 million and a half a year. So 15 million every 10 years. So it would bring in 30 over 20 years. So I'm not sure about the cost of borrowing the money and everything, but 30 million over 20 years would be in excess of the $5 million times five years.
Yeah, so the actual length of, so obviously, when we go to the voters, we'd have to propose a period of time. The actual time is going to depend on market factors. The length of time that would be required to pay any borrowing would depend on market factors at the time.
But just conceptually, and tell me if you'd rather not say this, but a 20-year term, is that somewhere in the ballpark of what would be needed to implement that strategy?
I'd say that's pretty standard.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, we don't have a specific plan about additional leveraging opportunities at this point. But the purpose of what we're talking about with Measure C is to create those opportunities.
Yeah, of course, we don't even have, you have not even decided to place a measure on the ballot yet.
Yeah.
But if you did, what the actual details of any borrowing would look like to be able to achieve this accelerated schedule are uncertain right now. We would craft any measure if the council said to go forward in a way that would provide the flexibility and length of time necessary to make sure that the city got the best deal possible on the market at the time to get the funds to do that kind of accelerated schedule.
And I guess that's the important point from my perspective. It creates those opportunities for us if we go forward with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
You know, if we go back to Measure C when it was first proposed, that was 1% for 20 years. And that was going to get all the roads repaved in like a three-year period, as I remember. Yeah, so that was going to bring in about 20 million, and it was adequate to pave all the roads up front and then use the revenue stream to pay down the debt over the course of 20 years.
Well, that's what we're going to figure out.
Yeah. And that's pretty easy to work out once, you know, Public Works gets an estimate on what the current cost of doing that is.
Yeah, but I think we're taking some good initial steps with this, so, thanks.
And so this next chart kind of illustrates, even though I talk about PCI and the number, it's not just a number, it's really getting the street into a condition where it's less expensive to maintain in the long run. And so this is a curve that a lot of pavement engineers like to show. The basic story is the life of pavement and how it deteriorates at a slow rate up front, and then it gets to a breakpoint, and then it's kind of exponential. When it starts to break up, it starts to break up more, and a street will be good for the vast majority of its life, and then it will really tail off. And rehabilitating a street early in its life is relatively inexpensive. It can get up to 40 times more to fix a street when it gets to a failed condition than if you just took care of it when it was in a good condition. And to a lot of people, it's not intuitive to rehabilitate good roads, but roads do oxidize. They lose their flexibility when the sun hits them over time, and they get more brittle, and then it makes them easier to crack. And so it's important to protect the good roads as well as the poor roads. And so what this shows is when you get your streets down, you know, in the 30s as far as the PCI range goes, it gets really expensive to rehabilitate them. We want to get them up in the 70 range, and then we can do some less expensive treatment to keep them in shape for longer. And so moving back globally to the capital program, we basically take all of those needs, so all of those studies that we have, all the condition reports, and then we balance it with those available funds. So the grants that are out there, the funds that we know that are coming in through local sources, and we merge them together and we assign funds to projects. And so the first slide is a little hard to read. And again, there are handouts that go into these projects in a little bit more detail. But this first set of projects are what we call carryover projects or ongoing projects. So these are projects that have appeared in the capital program before, and they're not going to be complete this year, so they basically get carried over. In some cases, we add funding to them because they've got to a new phase, and so we need to add more money to keep going. In other cases, they've already had all the funding allocated, and the construction contract is simply going to carry over into this fiscal year. And so I'll quickly go through this list and highlight any of the funding allocations that are proposed. And again, if you can't read the slide, one of the attachments to the staff report was an Excel file of this sheet. And so the first project that's listed on here is the local streets for 1617. So that is the project that you just awarded a contract tonight for that should be underway mid-June of this year, last through August, that will pave about two and a half miles of streets. There is no new funding proposed this year, so this project was funded as part of last year's capital program. And so that money simply carries over into next year's budget. The next project is for Doherty Drive mitigation monitoring. And so this was for a multi-use path on Doherty Drive that we constructed about four years ago. There were some environmental impacts, and we have to do ongoing monitoring for five years. So this is the last of those five years. And so it has had, for the last four years, an allocation of approximately $7,000 to do that monitoring. This is the last year that's required, so it's an ongoing project. The next one is citywide storm drain repairs. And so this project has two functions. Number one, it helps fund minor storm drain repairs throughout the city that are beyond the capacity of our maintenance crews and their operating budget. It's also funding our storm drain master plan. And so this has received about $100,000 worth of funding for each of the last four years to fund those activities. And so we're proposing, again, this year to add that same amount so that we can keep working and hopefully this year finish the storm drain master plan. And that funding is coming from gas tax. The next project is corridor lay of storm drains. So this is a repair to storm drains up in the Greenberry Hills. This is a project that was partially funded last year. We actually went out to bid, and the bids came in high, surprisingly. So it wasn't awarded. We've gone back and looked at a few things. We've had a geotech report done. We've got a little bit more information. We're going to go out to bid again. We still think we need some more money in order to build that project. And so in this year's project, we will, are proposing to add about $315,000, and that's coming from gas tax and our Transportation Authority of Marin Measure A and Measure B money. The next is a new project that's proposed to be an ongoing project. And so this is similar to our citywide storm drain repairs. This is kind of citywide bike and pedestrian path improvements. And so as we did our bike and ped master plan, we identified a lot of big new projects, but then there was also identified a lot of little areas that could use minor improvements, either ADA or gap closures. And so this project is intended to fund some of those smaller projects. Again, projects that are a little bit bigger than what our maintenance crews can handle with their operating budget, but not typically big enough to warrant a full grant application because it takes time and effort to do some of those grants. And so some of your smaller projects aren't very suited well for grants. And so we don't have a list of projects. We'll definitely be going out to the community and looking back through the information we got when we did the bike and ped master plan to identify some improvements that are needed in that network. The next project is Magnolia Avenue ADA improvements. So this project was funded last year with $100,000 to start. Looking at the downtown core and ADA improvements, the request for the coming fiscal year is $200,000. That's to continue, basically to work on the design, do the public engagement, get everything ready up to the point of construction. The $200,000 does not pay for construction. So the $100,000 last year pays for preliminary evaluation, some surveying. $200,000 for this year will pay for all of the engineering and the public workshops and engagement before we can go out and do those physical improvements in the downtown corridor. And there are future phases to that project, too. The downtown, the Magnolia Avenue ADA improvements are required for the full length of Magnolia throughout the city. And so we're focusing on the downtown core first. And the identified funding source for that, as it was last year, is vehicle impact fees. The next project is public stair improvements. So this was actually shown in last year's capital project as a proposed project for this year, so we've added it in there. This is primarily to modify, fix, or install handrails at some of the current stairs in the city that don't have conforming rails. There are other needs on the stairs, too, but the first phase was to look at the handrails. And so that's what this money is proposed for. And the fund source for that is gas tax. The next project, Doherty Drive Safe Pathways to Schools. This is another project that went out to bid last year, was funded last year, but came in over budget, significantly over budget. We've been meeting with our consultant, with the school board, and with Redwood High School over the last few months, looking at options to try and revise this project and to try and get the cost down so that we can go back out to bid with the project because, to date, we haven't identified any other funding sources to bridge that funding gap. So we have an option moving forward of building only a portion of the path to get something built with the current grant that we have. Or we could put the project off another year and look for funding to fund the whole project. So we'll be coming back to you in the near future to look for some guidance in moving forward or deferring that project and look for more funding. And that was the Transportation Authority of Marin Safe Pathways to School grant that has funded, that funded portion of that project to date. The next project is the Rose Lane Multi-Use Path Connection. So that's the project where we have a property purchase and then finish a gap in the bike path at the north end of the Rose Lane development. No new funding. Again, it was in the capital program last year. It's just being carried over in the future year. The next project is Hillview Garden Storm Drain. And so this is the project that proposes to replace the storm drains in the Hillview subdivision and reroute them to a new pump station that will be part of the Bonner Bridge Pump Station. Again, the preliminary work for this project was funded in last year's capital program. We're still in the preliminary stage. We have, we went through an MOU with the county because the Flood Zone 9 drainage fee runoff fee is paying for 30% of this whole project. And so we have a memorandum of understanding with the county that came before you and was approved, and believe next week it'll be going through the county to get approved at their board so that we can move forward with the preliminary engineering.
Is that a Board of Supervisors?
Board of Supervisors. It's been to the Flood Zone Advisory Board, and it actually has to go to the Board of Supervisors, yeah.
Right, so the advisory board, they're done.
They have approved it, yes. Yep. And so that project doesn't have any new funding proposed this year. If we make good progress on the preliminary work and we want to jump ahead and do some of the engineering, then we'll come back and do a budget amendment and do another MOU with the county to get some of that Flood Zone 9 money added into the budget. And then the total cost, so I should have explained in some of the columns here, the first row of numbers that's bolded is the amount of money we're requesting in this coming year's budget. The next column is the total project cost. So they're not always the same number, especially for carryover projects that are bringing money forward with them. Or in the case of Hillview, this project will have more money in future fiscal years. And that's, so that's why there's no ask this year, but the total project cost is about $900,000.
Yes, please.
We had a Flood Zone Advisory Board meeting last night, and we'll have another one in As the project evolves, what is happening, and you may be following this over the last couple of years, where upstream detention basins, designed to capture floodwaters before they hit business districts and neighborhoods downstream, these detention basins are finding public opposition. And from Fairfax to San Anselmo, as these detention basins run into opposition, the project has evolved so that now they're looking at alternatives to those things. Now they're in the town of Ross proposing channel improvements as an alternative, possible alternative to the series of detention basins. Here's my question. Should detention basins upstream not have public support, will the impacts to the project as the waters hit the channel and then the creek as it runs into Greenberry and Larkspur down at the bottom? How will that impact the Bonner Bridge mitigation projects? Because they'll be either higher velocity, or there'll be additional volume. I don't think there's additional volume projected because as all these waters end up in the creek channel anyway, by the time they hit the bottom, the velocity of it is something that I would imagine would change.
So that is definitely part of the analysis, and it has been part of the conversation as flood control looks at migrating these projects from detention basins to channel improvements. They've had a number of different options for channel improvements. And as they go through the options and try to figure out which of those make sense and which to move forward with, and the first step, obviously, is they're going to have to go through an environmental review, is one of the checkboxes is that it cannot make conditions downstream any worse. So they say a flood improvement in San Anselmo that removes an obstruction for the creek will relieve flooding upstream of where that obstruction was, but then it will allow more water to go downstream. Part of their program, part of their analysis, and they will be doing the hydraulics, is that doesn't serve anybody any good if it helps folks up here, but it impacts folks down there. So they're very aware that they have to look at downstream conditions of any upstream improvements that they make. So to answer your question, when they do all the hydraulics, it will have zero negative impact on downstream. They will incorporate something into the project that accommodates that flow. And again, it's probably a little easier to do when you get down to where we are because the channel is so wide and it's less so influenced from what's coming down from Ross, as opposed to, say, what they do in San Anselmo is going to have a much... As opposed to, say, what they do in San Anselmo is going to have a much bigger effect on Ross because the channel is still very narrow there and it doesn't have a lot of room to spread out. It always will have an impact downstream, but the, the impact by the time you get to us, we're more tidily influenced with our flooding issues than we are for stuff coming down from the creek. It will definitely get looked at, but it's not as big of an issue as if you were just looking at improving something in Ross and having, sorry, improving something in San Anselmo and then what its impact is going to be in Ross. That's a bigger concern than what it would be for us.
Could it impact the nature of the dredge required at, at the bottom of the channel?
Potentially.
I'm just wanting to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball as this changes.
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll, even though these projects are all upstream and they're not directly impacting us, they're in other agencies, this is where everything ends up. So we're definitely following what's, what's going through this process. Yep.
But it's not part of our CIP?
No, no.
Well, hopefully not ever, but we'll see.
Well, it assumes that the flood fees and the grant funding for the upstream projects comes through. One of the, one of the discussions last night was depending on, on the timing of public acceptance of the projects, the scheduling of reviews and approvals by the various jurisdictional authorities along the way, that we were, we could be up against deadlines for grant funding if those expire. I just want to make sure that Larkspur's not left holding the bag and then expected to pick up 100% of the project funding of where we are. That's why, this is a very dynamic situation. I just want to make sure that we stay focused.
I, I, I think that's absolutely perfect observation. It's a very dynamic situation, and we need to be mindful of it. And there's a lot of bells and whistles that have to be addressed in that context, including federal bells and whistles, which have not been sorted out yet.
Which reminds me, while I have the mayor's attention, there's a, the next flood zone meeting is scheduled for the week of June the 12th. I'll be following up with you to, you're gone the month of June?
No, not the entire month. I'll be gone on the eighth, seventh through the ninth, then I'll be back. So I'll be around on the 12th.
The, the week of the 12th?
The week of the 12th. I won't be out again until the 20th.
All right. Well, I'll talk to you about that.
I'd like that.
Thank you.
Okay, the last two projects on the slide for ongoing projects are our two big projects, the, the bridge and the associated mitigation projects. And so the Bonner Bridge replacement, we're showing an ad of funds this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year. We anticipate going out to bid again in the fall, and then we will be needing to start paying a contractor in late winter, spring of next year. So we're adding the money to the budget, and primarily, again, that comes from the Highway Bridge Program, pays for 88% of the construction, and then 11% comes from the bridge fund. The mitigation projects will fall a little bit behind the bridge project. We've got to make sure that that gets all its approvals and it's what the actual components are of that bridge reconstruction, because the mitigation project feeds off of that. And it's, if anything changes on the bridge program, it may affect the mitigation projects. So it'll lag a little bit behind, but we still anticipate needing money next fiscal year to start that project in construction. And again, much like the bridge, that project is 88% funded by the Federal Highway Bridge Program. So the next slide is just kind of showing a highlight of these project fact sheets. And so this just shows the, the top half of a couple of sheets that we've developed for our ongoing projects. And so as opposed to, we will be doing other budget sheets that are more traditional, similar to what we've done in the past, that are basically all numbers that show how much money has been in a project and how much money we propose adding and what the totals are by fiscal year. This is meant to be more user-friendly and public-friendly so that somebody can look up a project and actually see what it is, see where it is. And so this talks about the project, what it is we're doing. It gives a location in case somebody's not sure where one of our parks are. And then it talks about the benefit. Why are we doing this project? Is it deferred maintenance or is it an improvement to an end user? And then it also has a section that talks about the budget and funding. It talks about approximately how much money we think the project's going to cost in total. And then it also talks about any allocations that are in the current fiscal year for that project. And then it also gives a schedule, talks about a construction schedule, or if it's a longer project, it'll talk about project development, community outreach, and when we think we'll get into construction. And then it has contact information. So it'll have the project manager's email on here, whether it's me or Rita or Alvin or a consultant, so that they can reach out and get more information. And so the idea is to have these, once we get through the projects and they're all approved in the capital program, then these would go up on our website. We'll put them up in draft format first so that if folks want to comment on any of these projects before our meeting on the 7th, we can hear back from them. And they can see a little bit more information on them. And then when the projects are adopted, we'll take the draft stamp off, and then they'll be up on our website so that people can have a look and see what projects we're doing.
Julian, these look very nice. It's a very good format to do use. I think they're very legible and colorful and specific, so I appreciate this new change.
So this next section is our new projects. And so I gave a little highlight of these when we went through the operating budget, and I'll go into them a little bit more detail here. And then I do have, I added the project fact sheets as part of the PowerPoint as we go on. So I think I'll probably, rather than trying to read from the chart here, I'll go to the project fact sheets and read from there. So the first project, and again, these are divided into our municipal facilities. So the first section of projects is our buildings, and then the next section of projects is our parks, and then the last section is our transportation and drainage and utilities. And so the first project we have here is Fire Station 16 improvements. So this is the fire station over on Berry Way and Greenway. It's had some water infiltration issues over the years. There's a photograph here of some effervescence on some of the concrete walls, but there's also some carpets in there that get wet during rain events. And so it's been looked at before, but we've, haven't done a comprehensive analysis. We've tried a few things. We've changed some flashing over there and done some painting. But still, this past winter, there was water coming into that station in certain areas. So we anticipate it's probably about a $300,000 cost to get in there and fix everything. But the first phase is to make sure we understand what the issue is, where's the water coming from, and come up with some methodologies for repairing that. And so this is one of those projects where although there's going to be work down the road in this year's capital program, we're only programming the money to do the investigation and to start putting some real costs together. The $300,000 estimate is based on our assumption of what needs to be fixed. We'll actually hire a consultant that specializes in leak detection in buildings to evaluate what's happening and how to fix that, and then we'll be able to come up with a better estimate moving forward. So this year's request is just the $20,000 to do that front-end work so that we can better evaluate what needs to be done here in the future.
Do we have a preliminary understanding about where the water's coming from?
There are, yeah, there are some, there are some flashing interfaces at the bottom where the stucco meets the concrete on one side of the building that have been re-flashed, yet water still continues to come in under kitchen cabinets. And so there's something with that detail that maybe is not just the flashing on the outside that's letting water in. There's some areas where paving or concrete has settled, and when it rains, the water drains towards the building, which is never a good thing. And then once it gets there, it may find its way into the building somewhere. There's some glazing where you can see water comes in the window panels. And then up on the second floor, there's a balcony that water always seems to be sitting in and makes it sway into doors that are flush. At one time, they did actually enclose that balcony to try and solve the issue, but the water still somehow makes its way into the covered balcony and into those rooms.
Water goes where it goes.
It, it makes it where it wants to go, yeah. So that's it for our building projects for this coming year. Moving on to the parks projects, and so again, these park projects were reviewed with the Parks and Recreation Commission a month or so ago in priority order. And so these come from the Mini Parks Master Plan. The first project that was identified is to have some conformity with our park identification signs. And this kind of first came about when the folks out at the Serenity Apartments are going to be doing the improvements out at Neighborhood Park, and we were out there and we looked at that sign and identified that it really needed to be fixed. And then in looking at some of the other parks, realized that none of the parks looked the same, the signage. So this is an opportunity to do kind of a signage program to have some community identity with our parks. And so again, this is a project that will have a construction cost down the road, but at this time, we're only proposing doing the front-end work. So hiring an architect to do some mockups of some potential sign designs, and then sharing those with the community and the Parks and Rec Commission to get some buy-off on what that signage should look like for our parks. And so that's estimated to be $10,000. And then the funding is proposed to come from the County Parks Measure A. The next project is Niven Park Improvements. And so this is kind of a comprehensive renovation of that park, forecast to be about $100,000. And again, we're phasing this, so we're looking at spending $15,000 in the coming fiscal year to do the community outreach and do the preliminary design and do an evaluation to make sure that we're doing the correct improvements, even though we're pulling from the Mini Parks Master Plan. Want to make sure that those needs haven't changed in the community and make sure that we have buy-in on what those improvements would be. And conceptually, we're looking at adding some accessible picnic areas, and then also looking to put up a fence, maybe to do a little better separation between the open field areas where people run their dogs and the play area where there's, where there are children. And then some landscaping upgrades.
Julian, can I ask you about that specific project? I was out there today, and along that bike path there, I know we, our terr, our jurisdiction does not include the strip of land and bike, and areas that are closest to the creek. And there are a lot of old abandoned picnic tables and things out there. Is there any opportunity to coordinate with the county's responsibility in that so that maybe this Niven Park project improvements extend a little bit into that area? Because it's a very under glamorous part of that end of Niven Park.
Yeah, we can look into that as part of the project development.
Okay. It's a really beautiful section that could be made enhanced a lot better, too. Thank you.
Okay, the next project is Piper Park Tennis Court Resurfacing. So this was last addressed about 10 years ago, which seems to be about the life of the tennis court. It has cracks in it, and there's a lot of ghosting of where a lot of the surface material has faded. And so this is similar to a street, how you can wait until it needs to be reconstructed and pay a lot of money, or you can do some maintenance on it in the short term, and in this case, a 10-year cycle, to do a moderate $40,000 repair job that would address the cracks and then resurface all of the courts. And this will preserve it so that it doesn't get to a state where we have to rebuild it. Rebuilding a tennis court is, you know, upwards of half a million dollars. So money well spent to preserve it.
I have a question on that one.
And again, the funding source identified for this is County Parks Measure A.
But Julian, the courts are not even. So you can fix the cracks, but the courts?
To a certain degree, they can do some shaving, some patching, and some crack filling. At a certain point, it kind of gets beyond that. So that would be part of the evaluation as to what we can fix and what we can't. We don't have the funds at this time to do a full replacement, so we're going to evaluate it. Based on our preliminary evaluation, we think we can do some crack sealing and some minor grinding and some filling and resurface it and it be usable. If we take a look at it further and we really think that, no, it's beyond that and we're throwing away money by repainting it and we need to do more, something more significant, we'll definitely take a step back. We don't, yeah. We don't want to spend $40,000 on it and then find out that really it was in much worse shape and have to repair it anyway.
Yeah, if the courts are uneven, it's just not worth fixing. Okay, great. Thank you.
No, that's, that's actually a good observation.
Julian, on that one, have we considered a public-private partnership with the tennis clubs that use that area, like we did at the Greenberry Park, School Park a couple of years ago? And then like we did at, in Heather Gardens at that park?
Yeah, so that is, that's always going to be part of the project development as we move forward with these projects and we do the community outreach. And, and often, we've got a placeholder in here of city funds to do the project. If we can find partners that are willing to step in to either participate or add value to a project, then that's something that typically we do at the front end of a project as we start it up and we do that outreach with the folks that, that use the facility. So definitely something we'll keep in mind.
Yeah, I think that's, those are all very helpful suggestions because it's, it's important for us to have a, a good facility there.
Well, and the renovation I'm thinking of, of the basketball courts over at, at School Park, was a great example of the community who accesses and utilizes that facility to the greatest extent, really were great partners in participating with the city and, in, in helping.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I was contacted by some of the people who use the tennis courts competitively, and they expressed interest in organizing for such an effort.
Yeah.
I don't know what they, what their capabilities versus the necessary cost to rebuild the courts. They seem to be interested in, in a much more comprehensive reconstruction than, than what is contemplated.
And Dick Whitley's aware of all this.
Yes, he's, yes, he's very aware. So I guess there's a, some kind of pro forma that needs to be outlined so that there's a, just some description that can be used for purposes of discussion with these private organizations.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a terrific idea. I mean, this is actually a very helpful conversation. I think it would be good to explore these options.
The challenge is it's a very big cost.
I, I understand that, and that's why it's worth having these conversations with folks that might want to.
But they, but they had great, good, there was, there was an expression that there was energy out there to do this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so Mr. Whitley was definitely involved in developing these projects, so we'll definitely be conferring with him as we move forward and figuring out what the best, what the best course of action is specifically for the, for the tennis courts.
That'd be great. Thank you.
This next project is volleyball improvements. And so this is not actually proposed to be built next year, but we've thrown it in there because there are some folks in the community that have talked about pledging money. The first volleyball court improvement was such, such a success and has seen a rise in rentals that we were looking at doing the same thing for the second volleyball court. And basically, it's removing the old sand and putting in, I don't know what the correct term is, professional volleyball sand that's softer and that doesn't clump, and that's easier to play on, and then a net that's easier to maintain. And so the total cost for that project's about $40,000. We don't have room for it, we don't think, in this year's capital program, but we wanted to throw it in there and throw a $5,000 kind of seed money so that we could start the project development and kind of start the interaction with the folks that use the volleyball, and again, see if there's an opportunity to generate some funds in the community for, for this project. So it's in there, but not the total funding cost for this coming year.
Julian, I like your description that since then, Larkspur's Recreation has seen a dramatic spike in court use.
Yes, that wasn't me. That was our.
It was a planned word, by Rita, I bet.
Yeah, it was our management analyst Rita who came up with that verbiage, yes. And Rita, I should give her the credit for the format that you see here. Rita was really great in laying this out visually and itemizing all the information in a, in a format that she thought would be most useful. So moving on to the streets projects or transportation projects. So the first one is not technically new. You did see this last year when we got a grant, a TDA grant for improving the crosswalk at Magnolia and Madrone. And so this project, the consultant has just started work on it, doing his investigation of traffic conditions at that intersection. It's paid for 100% with a Transportation Development Act grant, just over $110,000. The plan is to install a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the crossing on Magnolia at Madrone and do some other intersection improvements, too, yet to be determined. But we'll be doing some public outreach when we But we'll be doing some public outreach when we get a little bit further along in that process, and hopefully, that'll be under construction in fall of this year. And so the first new, new project, well, again, this is not new, new, it's just got a new project number. So this is, much like we have to do mitigation monitoring for the old Doherty Drive Path, this is mitigation monitoring for the Doherty Bridge Project. And so before, this work was lumped in with the Doherty Bridge Project, but that has since been closed out. And so this is just opening up a new project to account for the money we have to spend on the mitigation monitoring for the Doherty Bridge. And so this is, excuse me, this is year three of five, so there's another two years after this. And the monitoring for this is actually covered as part of the Highway Bridge Program. So again, 88% of the $18,000 a year we have to spend on the monitoring is paid for out of the Bridge Program. Okay, so the first new, new project, so this is Doherty Drive Rule 20A undergrounding, and you've also seen this project in a fashion before because the, the resolution for the Underground District came before you earlier this year. And so this is the project incorporated into our capital program. So this is the undergrounding of all the overhead wires on Doherty, the remaining of all the wires on Doherty. So there's a section down by the high school from Lucky to about Riviera East, and then there's another section from the CNPA all the way to, almost all the way to Magnolia that is overhead. So this project would underground those wires, and then it would get rid of the poles. And so this project is, for the most part, paid for by PG&E Rule 20A credits. They basically bank money every year for all of the agencies, and when you have enough money banked up, you can use that money to underground overhead utilities on your arterials and collectors. And so we've done little segments of Doherty before, and so this project looks to complete all of the undergrounding on Doherty. The only city cost for this project will be for the streetlights. PG&E don't pay for that. So as we get into project development down the road, we'll be having that discussion about how many streetlights we should have in that corridor, given that there is, you know, going to be a funding aspect associated with adding any streetlights to that corridor. So the ask for this year is $100,000, and that basically kicks the project off. Most of that is the Rule 20A money that will come from PG&E.
And as I recall, it's about three lights that we're talking about.
There are currently three lights there. We have the option of putting no lights in, three lights back in that are there now, or more lights. So we'll be looking at it and coming back with a recommendation to you based on that corridor and the level of lighting that's already out there from some of the parking lots, and the lights across the street, and the use as to where we think lights should be situated.
Are there standards that we have to comply with in order to provide that level of lighting?
Um...
Or it's just something we have to figure out?
I don't think we have anything in our municipal code for levels of streetlights. Some agencies do. And again, typically, your lights are for your pedestrians, so you look for them at crosswalks and sidewalks. Cars have headlights, obviously. There are, there are agencies in California that have no streetlights throughout the town or city.
Right.
So there is not a requirement. But typically, some jurisdictions do have recommendations for a certain amount of illumination on streets. But typically, what they look at in citing streetlights is in areas where there's conflict. So definitely where there's a pedestrian crosswalk, you would want a streetlight. And then areas that are different or not, the layout of the street is not intuitive to a driver, you would want to highlight with street lighting. So we will look at all of those things and come back with a recommendation.
Councilmember, Hillary, you have a question?
Is there an opportunity to replace the existing lamps that are on the south side of Doherty to match those that are Rose Lane with better cutoff fixtures?
Not as part of the Rule 20A project, it would not pay for that.
Has that been discussed?
Not to my, has it been discussed with PG&E?
Has the city discussed replacing those?
Not to my knowledge.
To the high school, matching those that are at Rose Lane? I remember when Mary Grace was here, we had talked about looking for an opportunity to do that at first chance.
So we can do an inventory of what's out there and what types are out there when we go with that project, and when we come forward with recommendations for where we think there should be streetlights, we can kind of look at what makes sense, whether we should be matching a style.
And can the, and can the new fixtures that are part of this project have similar characteristics? LED?
Yep.
Good cutoff for reduced pollution? Thank you.
Yep.
Anya, you got a question?
Julian, what do you mean by banking credits with PG&E? Is that...
Yeah, so every year...
Or do you want to take the fifth?
No, so every year, PG&E assigns a set dollar amount for each agency in the Rule 20A account for that agency. And the money is specifically for undergrounding overhead electrical utilities and removal of poles on, they also have to meet a set of other criteria, it could be collector street or an arterial high-traffic volume. And it's done by a very complicated formula that I have somewhere in an email, but it doesn't make a whole lot of, a whole lot of sense. And so historically, they've put aside this money in lieu of having all the cities ask, can you underground this, can you underground that? This is a way of them kind of regulating it and being able to disperse it amongst all of the agencies, is that you build up the credits, and when an agency has built up a certain amount of money over the years that's enough to underground a stretch, they can apply for PG&E saying, we've built up a certain amount of credits with you, we think that's enough to underground Street A. Can we initiate a project? And then PG&E say yes, and then it takes about three years to go through PG&E, and then they can come in and underground everything. There's been a number of court cases about that fee and what it really means, and I think it ultimately got reduced by about 50% two or three years ago. And so I think our bank, right now, we're up to over a million dollars. And at one time, we were collecting over $100,000 a year, but that number has since gone down now that PG&E has revised their formula. I don't know if Sky has anything to add to the whole Rule 20A issue, but, but basically every year, they say City A, City B, City C, $50,000 is how much we're going to put in the pot for you over here. And then we let it build to an amount, we don't see, we don't ever see that money, it doesn't come to us.
I see, okay.
They hold it, it's a credit with them.
Okay, so it's nothing we can actually work on to increase our credits? It's something that they've allocated? Okay, I get it.
Correct.
And then also for neighborhoods who want to pay for an individual doing of a neighborhood, let's say, like some communities have done, is that system that, does PG&E still have that process underway?
They do. So the Rule 20A program is for agency-funded.
Oh, okay.
So that's our collectors and arterials. If a neighborhood wishes to do it, and they're on what are considered local streets, so neighborhood streets would not qualify...
Okay.
For the Rule 20A money, they can apply to PG&E for their Rule 20B program. Or if it's a small enough neighborhood, I think there's a limit, maybe two or three homes, there's a Rule 20C program.
Yeah, too much.
Yeah, so a decent size...
What do you get with 20D?
Yeah, no, I don't know that there's a D.
What do you get with 20F?
Yeah, yeah, so a subdivision could get together and choose to move forward with a Rule 20B project. It is surprisingly expensive to underground your overhead utilities. We've had, you know, I've had a number of neighborhoods that have looked at it and gone to a certain point, and then when they get the numbers back, all of their neighbors that were in favor of it for aesthetics, it's not a high priority anymore. Numbers change all the time, but roughly, it's, it's like between 50 and $100,000 per home to do an undergrounding. It's a significant undertaking, and when a lot of people get to that number, the number of people in a neighborhood that are interested goes down quite a bit.
But it's really the pavement, you know, taking up the pavement that's, that's the most costly part of the whole project, correct?
Well, there's, so there's a number of things. It's, they have to install, yeah, they have to dig into the pavement, they have to put new conduits in, it all has to be re-engineered. It's a lot more, the infrastructure that goes in the ground is more expensive than the infrastructure that's above ground. And then it's not just your PG&E, you've got Comcast, your phone utilities, basically all your other utilities have to come on board, too. Now, with a Rule 20A, the other utilities, they pay out of their funds, so PG&E pays and Comcast pay for all of their stuff. When you come to a Rule 20B, the homeowners are paying for all of those other utilities to be undergrounded, too. And then it's not just the overhead utilities and the poles in the street, everything that goes to your house then has to get undergrounded and either go under your driveway, under your landscaping, they have to come up and they have to put a new panel in your home. It's very expensive and very complicated.
Yeah, I'd just add that most, my experience, at least, most neighborhood underground utility undergrounding projects are done through an assessment district, that basically the property owners choose to assess themselves. It goes on the property tax roll, and basically, you take that, you know, I'd go maybe a little lower just based on some experience, like 20,000 to $70,000 expense, you issue bonds based on the assessment, but basically goes on the property tax roll, and several property owners end up paying it off over time. But it's, it's a very significant upfront expense.
Councilmember Hillary?
Is there any reduced risk of power outages in a neighborhood where the utilities are undergrounded?
So one of the, one of the theories behind the Rule 20A program is that they're safer underground, they're, especially on your busier streets, are less susceptible to being struck by vehicles or vandalism, anything that's above ground. And so that is one of the criteria for being eligible for Rule 20A, is that it's on a busy street, because in theory, everything is safer underground.
For example, the Heather Gardens neighborhood frequently has transformers that explode, causing area-wide outages. Would there be any benefit to, while we're doing these repaving projects, to see if there's interest in the neighborhoods in organizing under, under these, this framework?
That, that's potentially something we could look at for long-range planning.
But the timeframes don't work for this.
With PG&E, and not to pick on PG&E, but it's probably three years out for, they have a lot, there's a lot of interest in the Rule 20A program because it's money coming from PG&E. So they are very backlogged in all of their undergrounding projects, and the Rule 20B, it's the same crews that do the installation, and so it's pretty much about a three-year turnaround from when you initiate a project till when you see everything undergrounded.
Would that impact, is there an opportunity for a neighborhood to discuss this with the city and possibly, I hate to ask, but reschedule the paving, a paving project so that it could align with an undergrounding project? I know Heather Gardens would be interested in that.
Again, as part of the forward planning, I think that, that definitely could be part of the conversation. The, you know, the, the other thing is, as I mentioned, there's often a lot of neighborhood interest in undergrounding because it's aesthetically pleasing. And it's been my experience in the past that as we move through the process with a neighborhood, as we get further down the process, there's less and less interest as the costs, people see the costs start to go up and up. And so, you know, I would just want to make sure that we didn't go down a path thinking we were going to do an undergrounding and unnecessarily put off paving. It would have to be weighed against the cost of, you know, as I showed on some of the charts before, if you let your paving go too long and you don't get to it, you may get bumped to a more expensive treatment. So I think if those two things were weighed together and there was an understanding that the paving may get delayed, but at some point, there may be an overall cost where the city would have to say, we have to pave the street, you know, in the next two years, or it's going to cost another $100,000 to pave the street.
Am I correct in assuming that the Heather Gardens paving project is a thin resurfacing that's proposed?
Yeah, correct.
Because the last time we had this, and it was not too long ago, within a month, the streets were washboarding.
Those particular streets? Yeah, so this, so this year is a thin overlay, but it's a thicker overlay than it was last time. So those streets 10 years ago were treated with what's called a CAPE seal, which is a combination of a chip seal and a slurry seal, or a microsurface, very thin, wear-only surfaces, which are really good treatments for certain streets. And in certain areas out there, they've worked really well, in other areas, they haven't, because as it turned out, the road just did not have the base or the foundation, and the streets wore out, and it wasn't the appropriate treatment. What we're proposing this year is an actual layer of asphalt, so a two-inch layer of asphalt...
I see.
Not the slurry that was put on them before. So it will look like a new street when we're finished.
I'll follow up with you on fine.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So the next project here is next year's Local Streets project. So again, our annual primarily Measure C funded, although there is some vehicle impact fees in this project, too, to bring the total up to about 1.5 million. Next year's streets are projected to be all in the Riviera Circle area, so that's the Larkspur Marina. There are a number of aging utilities in those streets, so we're working with the utility districts to make sure that they can get whatever fixes they need to do before we get out there and do our pavement. And based on our preliminary assessment of those streets, these are going to be expensive streets to rehabilitate. They're in pretty bad shape, and they're going to need the kind of treatment where we have to dig down into the pavement, treat the soil below, recompact it, and then pave over, over top of it. So potentially disruptive to the utilities that are below. So that's tentatively, tentatively, the neighborhood that's scheduled for next year. Again, we always coordinate with utility districts because we don't want them having to come back and dig up new streets. I should mention the other streets that will be paved next year, there's a handful of streets in Palm Hill that were deferred this year, so we gave the Water District an opportunity to get in and fix some of their water mains this year, so we had to defer a handful of streets from Palm Hill this year. Those will be added into next year's project.
Julian, are you finding that people are replacing their lateral lines per suggestion before we get there?
Not consistently there, it kind of comes and goes. We get a group, I think some of the neighbors do talk to each other, or they've been on Nextdoor and chatting, and we'll get, you know, a group, bunch of permits together, but not an entire neighborhood. And, you know, I can't say what the condition, whether all of those actually need to, or maybe a lot of folks did have them inspected and they don't need to be replaced. But yeah, it was not a wholesale group of residents replacing their laterals before this year.
I was wondering, because we did receive, I received a homeowner letter suggesting that if, that lateral lines should be done, if they intend to do them, so I was just wondering if others were responding to that.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, we got, it wasn't a whole lot. We probably got a handful of calls about people who inquired about that, and we passed them on to the Sewer District. So we did send out a couple of advisory letters, one maybe six months ago, letting folks know that we were going to be paving the street, and advised them if they had any utility needs, that they would need to do it before rather than after. We do have a moratorium...
Yeah, I think it's good.
Where they can't pave the street for five years after we're complete. And then we sent a follow-up reminder notice maybe about a month ago, just for those that maybe had, have forgotten or put it off, that's still just a last reminder to get anything done in the street before we get there and pave.
Okay, good, thanks.
So I think that was, where did we go here? That was the last of the new projects, and so, no. There are more, as I mentioned, I didn't go through all of the individual sheets for the past projects, you've seen them before, but I'm happy to provide more information on those if there's a need. And as I mentioned, there's no specific action that's requested tonight, it's purely feedback as far as the projects and the funding sources that you've seen tonight. And then we'll be back in June with more information for a formal adoption.
Okay, terrific. Any, any further comments or questions from council?
Just how impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, there was a discussion, I can't remember if it included you or when we had a prior Public Works Director, they were talking about upgrading, not upgrading, but reclassifying some of our streets in order, because of the higher volume, that they're really not collectors, but arguably could be arterials and then get, you know, funding for it. How is that coming along?
Yeah, so we had a draft study that looked at reclassifying some of our streets. It hasn't been finalized yet. And so the, the basic premise is that if you get a street elevated and classified... And so the basic premise is that if you get a street elevated in classification to a certain level, it gets on the Caltrans map and then it becomes eligible for federal funding. There's not a whole lot of federal funding for streets out there. In fact, the, when the federal funding comes to Marin, it comes to us by formula and typically in the past, a lot of the smaller agencies have swapped that federal money with either Nevada or San Rafael or the county because they get a bigger chunk of money and because it's federal money, you have to do a NEPA review and there's a lot of costs involved in processing federal aid money. So what the classification does is it makes more of our streets eligible for that federal money. A, there's not a whole lot of it out there. I mean, there was, the last significant chunk would have been the ARA projects back, was it six, seven years ago? Yeah, longer than that, yeah. So there's a cost associated with going through the process of reclassifying these streets. There are some other downsides to having your streets classified higher. But essentially, we haven't moved forward with that yet because the cost of having, we have to go through the numbers, you have to verify the amount of traffic that's on the street, so we have to do some counts. So there's a cost involved with that and it hasn't been high on my priority list because at the moment, I'm not convinced that we get a whole lot of benefit out of it because they're simply not the federal dollars that are, that are out there. You know, the TAM money that we get, we can spend out on any of the streets in the city. It doesn't have to be on that federal aid list. Obviously, our bridges are eligible whether they're on a federal aid street or not. It's, we do have a draft study and it's something that's kind of on my desk and I'll be evaluating whether, I think it's worth moving forward with.
Okay. Anything else? We have a, we have a couple members of the public, any public comments or questions? Cindy?
Cindy Winter-Greenbree, I was real happy to hear about all the proposed bicycle and pedestrian improvements and also for the ADA. And I would suggest bringing in the Marin, what is it, the Committee on Aging, the Commission, because they, the older folks do a lot of walking too. And I think that somehow the notice about the various projects being discovered should be spread as broadly as possible because I think you'll get a pretty good turnout. I hope so. So I shall report back to the advocates who are not here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. On that point, I, Julian, I was, with Cindy's point there, I was wondering, are we utilizing those plastic boxes of where flyers can be installed along bike paths and things as an opportunity to communicate? They were installed a couple of years back in the parks and on, I know, the bike path. Is that what you're kind of referring to in many ways?
No. Not me personally, because when I'm riding my bike anywhere, I'm focused on the road so my tires don't fall into a crack. And on the bike path, I'm pretty much looking all around and looking at the path and their dogs and their other cyclists. So, but I have heard people say that they noticed something in a box, so it's worth a try.
Okay, thanks. I was referring to those plastic things that were installed a few years ago to put flyers on, on the bike path.
Great. Anything else? Yeah, James, you want to approach?
James Holmes-Larksburg, a couple of points, a specific point, first of all, with respect to the project relating to Magnolia and Madrone intersection. I recall when I looked at the initial proposal, I had some considerable concerns with it and that it was determined that it would come back to the council for further review. The particular concerns that I had related to narrowing the entrance to Madrone Canyon because I felt that number one, that would make it harder for cars to maneuver as they were coming in, particularly cars waiting, going in and waiting as cars came out, and also that it simply made it a more constricted and less gracious entrance for what is really a signature site in Larkspur. So I would like to confirm that there will be an additional opportunity for the review of that proposal because candidly, if there is a proposal to narrow Madrone Canyon, I think that raises real concerns. And when I was looking at the draft here, I couldn't tell whether narrowing was still in the cards or not. It refers to minor intersection changes, but any narrowing of that road, which was expanded in the 1970s, very necessarily so, I think would be a matter of concern. I think it needs to come before the council, I think it's a policy issue, not something that should defer to staff. The other point I would just say is that while there was no question about the signalization there or the flashing lights, the Heritage Board, when this came before them, they expressed a desire to see what they termed a less industrial design so that the, that the lights should go before the Heritage Board. But my concern is with the narrowing. And I would ask the council to bird dog that. The other aspect that relates to the project list, page two, it's what's listed as 2014-004, which is the Magnolia Avenue ADA improvements. It's now, it's 2000 for this year and it all comes out of vehicle impact fees. And I have a real concern with the concept of using vehicle impact fees for things that really do not relate to the impact of vehicles. It relates to pedestrians, it's not frivolous, but it does not relate to the purpose for which the fees are entitled and assessed. And the argument that has been made is, well, certain ADA improvements are a necessary prerequisite to repaving, and that is certainly true. However, there is no substantial plan for a major repaving in, on Magnolia so that these ADA improvements are not preludes to repaving. So I really, I think if ever there was something, I know the city has done a good job of finding grants for various projects, if there ever was a project which really ought to be covered by grants to the maximum extent possible rather than vehicle impact fees charged directly to the citizens, it is the ADA improvements because that responds to an external mandate. So I'm really concerned with that. The other and larger issue, I think, is what I would say is, I would, as you go through this and specifically with respect to the projects that are paid for by city dollars, I think that there should be a very meticulous attempt to differentiate between need-to-have and nice-to-have. And where something is really just a need-to-have, I'm sorry, a nice-to-have, I would prioritize pavement, repaving, above a nice-to-have. I think that's consistent with what the citizens are expressing as well. And, I mean, just to give you an example, I see reference to standardization of signs. I think that is something that, actually, it may be covered by Measure A, but in any event, I do think that the big picture here is that we should focus on fixing pavement rather than modifying interceptions that may be not ideal but nevertheless are still functional and if it's serviceable, let's retain it in preference to our pavement, which is not serviceable in so many places. And again, differentiate between need-to-have and nice-to-have. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Any further comments from the council?
Wait, Larry has one.
Yes.
Oh, no, I was going to say, I think, to address Mr. Holmes' comments, the things that are in the have-to-have look like they've been prioritized in a way that we're placing, say, for example, Measure C dollars on them. You know, the things that you might have pointed out as examples of nice-to-have, those were different sets of income streams when it comes from Measure A, not the Measure A from TAM, but the Measure A from the parks. You know, we can't use the park money for roads.
No, I understand that. Where the opportunity rises.
Yeah.
Where the opportunity rises, I think that...
We, yeah, we appreciate that. Okay, anything else from the council?
Thank you, it was very well done.
Yeah.
Yes, it was great. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Larry has one? Yeah, I was going to suggest we adjourn in memory of Jerry Monhey, Patty's husband. So recently, she recently lost her husband, yeah. So our condolences to Patty, a longtime police officer for Twin Cities Police and Central Marin Police.
And I think there's a reception coming up.
Yeah, on Sunday afternoon, I can't remember the time, but it's up at the park at the end of Smith Ranch Road.
McGinnis.
McGinnis, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
Is there a formal acknowledgement that we adjourned?
Usually the city clerk will send a letter to the family.
I think that would be appropriate too. I don't think we had any other arrangements for that.
So with that, with that addition...
I'll make a second?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.
Julian, when do you sleep?